Good evening and welcome to the meeting of Troy City Council. I'm Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of this meeting, except for the firemen who might need to leave theirs on. We'll begin with the invocation by Mr. Bobby Phillips, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Please bow your heads. Our Heavenly Father, thank you for each and every day you have blessed us here on earth. Thank you for your tender mercies. Thank you for giving us friends and families to share our joys and our sorrows. We ask you to bless our friends, relatives, brothers and sisters in Christ, and those who are not here with us this evening. Where there is joy, give them continued joy. Where there is pain or sorrow, give them your peace and mercy. Where there is self-doubt, release and renew confidence. And where there is need, fulfill those needs. Bless their families, homes, finances, their goings and their comings. Please watch over our members of our society who serve, both in the military and our local civil servants that work to protect our communities. We ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes, here.
Mrs. Snead?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mr. Twiliger?
Here.
Mr. Tremblay?
Here.
All members of council are present.
Tonight, we'd first like to introduce and welcome two of the city's newest firefighters. Chief Simmons, will you do the honors, please?
Yes, thank you. Got two firefighters? We recently just hired four firefighters to replace some firefighters who retired. And the first one here is David Smolinski and Andrew Bates. So David graduated from Miami's Burke High School, and he went on to Ohio State for athletic training prior to entering into the fire service. He is Ohio Certified Level 2 firefighter and a paramedic, and he's been working part-time at both Washington Township and West Carrollton Fire Department. And he currently resides in Kettering, Ohio. So welcome, David. And the second, Mayor. Andrew Bates here. And Andrew graduated from Lehman Catholic High School, and he's Ohio Certified Level 2 firefighter and paramedic. And he was a full-time firefighter working for the city of Springfield, Ohio. And Andrew and his wife Amy reside in Van Delle with their two children. So welcome.
Welcome, city council, and your staff, and your chief, and all of the fellow firefighters. We welcome you to our community, and we know you'll be an asset. And I'd like to present you with your shield for your helmet. So there is this, and there is this. The wish is very vast, and please sit. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I now welcome Mr. Stephen Justice with the Hope Over Heroin Coalition, who's here to explain their mission.
Thank you very much, President Baker, and members of council, Mayor Beamish, city manager. I certainly appreciate this opportunity to come to you and speak to you today about the Miami County Heroin Coalition. I have provided information to you, which I'm sure you've received in your packet. I won't insult your intelligence by reading everything to you, but I do want to highlight briefly some of the things that the Miami County Heroin Coalition is doing and what it really is. I attended a bench bar conference back in October of 2015. I'm an attorney by profession, partner with the law firm of Dungen and De Faber, and I head up the firm's litigation practice group. I was at a judicial conference with judges and members of the media to discuss important issues to society, and in particular, Montgomery County at that time. I went to this meeting last October, and for the next hour and a half, heard statistics about the overwhelming problem that society was dealing with in Montgomery County and really surrounding counties as well regarding opiate addiction and heroin in particular. Heard stories about how the Mexican cartel is literally routing heroin into Dayton, and that Dayton literally has the highest overdose rate per capita in the entire United States. People from all surrounding counties are coming into Dayton from other states as well to pick up heroin or taking it back to communities, including Miami County. I left that meeting, and I came back, and I called my friend, Matt Simmons, the fire chief, and got ahold of Tony Kendall, the prosecutor, and we called Chief Duchak at the sheriff's office. And I asked him a basic question. I said, "I heard these horrible statistics about the epidemic of heroin abuse and overdoses in Montgomery County. Are you experiencing the same thing here?" And what I heard was an overwhelming and resounding yes. In fact, what we learned through speaking with them is that Miami County is experiencing an unprecedented issue with heroin addiction and overdose. In the history of Miami County, we have never faced an epidemic with respect to drugs like we are currently experiencing with heroin addiction and abuse in this county. Right now, in Miami County alone, we have 50 people who are overdosing every month, just in Miami County. Across Ohio, there are over 25 people who die every day from heroin overdose. That's just heroin. This is not a poor issue. It's not a socioeconomic issue. It's not a race issue. There are as many people who are age 45 to 65 who are dying of heroin overdose as there are between the ages of 20 and 45. You can talk to the fire and EMS from Troy in terms of the houses where they go to administer Narcan to save people's lives, and it will tell you that many of their runs are to homes where people live, $300,000, $400,000, $500,000 homes have overdosed from heroin. There are a lot of issues that have led to this particular problem, including the abuse of prescription painkillers over the years. But I'm not here to go into all of those details, but I just wanted to highlight for you truly the epidemic that we're facing as a community right now. Currently, in Miami County, 80 to 85 percent of the crime that occurs is either directly or indirectly related to heroin. 80 to 85 percent. It's unprecedented. And I came back, and I said, you know, "What can we do?" So I spoke to some of our public leaders, and they said, "Let's get a volunteer group together." We began to meet in January of this year. And we met out at the Sheriff's Training Center, and I gathered officials from Troy, from Tip City, from Pickwa, both public and private, faith-based, church leaders, everybody who was interested in helping, because this was such a problem. It's going to take a community working together to address it. It really, really is. So we began to meet, and early on, we gathered officials from, not only just from our area, but state officials as well. You saw the list of names in the materials that were provided to you. The coalition formed four subcommittees to do the work and agreed that we would meet on a regular basis once a month. Our education and prevention subcommittee was put together to address both educating our community and developing strategies, both short-term and long-term, to help address the heroin addiction problem that we're facing. One of the first things we found is that we didn't have any brochure or resources that set forth the addiction treatment or counseling resources that were available to citizens in Miami County. So that's the first thing we worked on. You have a copy of it in the materials which have been provided to you. But we put together a colored brochure that provides information that now our first responders are using, our police, our fire, as well as government officials who are dealing with this issue, to provide to people to say, "This is where you can go, and you can get help." The second thing we did was we asked our second committee, the medical support committee, if they would put together an ideal system of care from A to Z, a flow chart, where people come into the system who need help, and hopefully, when they come out of the system at the end and they've broken the chain of addiction. And they did that. And we found early on that we had a number of gaps in our system of care for addiction. We found that we had no detox facilities anywhere in Miami County except the jail. We have 20 to 30 people detoxing in the county jail right now from heroin. We have no medically assisted detox facilities anywhere in Miami County. If a citizen of Miami County wants help, they have to go to another county to get medically assisted treatment right now. That's a hole. That's a real gap, because the biggest thing that prevents addicts from seeking help is withdrawal. And if they can't get treatment to help them during that phase, they don't get help. We also found that we had other issues that we had to address. But that flow chart of the system of care has become a guide for us. It's a target, something to aim for. We see where we have a need, and then we talk about where we can fill it, and that's what we're trying to do. Our Miami County Sheriff's Office, as well as Ohio State Highway Patrol, stepped up to the plate immediately and got training to be able to administer Narcan as first responders. In the city of Troy, our EMS is so great, our fire and EMS is so great, that if someone overdoses, they get there quickly, and they're there first. But if you go outside of our major metropolitan areas here in Miami County into the rural settings, often the sheriff's department or other police officers are there far before the EMS gets there. People can die from lack of breathing. That's how they die from overdose. So when the sheriff's department and Ohio State Highway Patrol agreed to get trained, on top of everything else they already do, to be able to administer Narcan, to pull someone out of respiratory arrest and to help them to breathe again, that was an amazing thing for those men to do, and those women to do. The Upper Valley Medical Center agreed to host the first clinical medical education for doctors in the entire state of Ohio regarding Suboxone treatment, which is the predominant drug that's used to treat heroin addicts during the withdrawal phase, to help them deal with the symptoms. No hospital in Ohio had agreed to do that, yet UVMC did, and the Upper Valley Medical Center Foundation sponsored that. And back on May 24th, we held our first CME for doctors to encourage doctors to be able to get licensed to prescribe that drug in Miami County. Another hole in our system of care was there was not one doctor in all of Miami County who was licensed to prescribe Suboxone. Not one. So if you're trying to treat addicts during the withdrawal phase, and you don't have a doctor who can administer the primary drug which is used to do that, that's a problem. And so we held that CME. We've had at least one doctor and are pursuing others, people that came out of that who have agreed to get licensed. This Friday and Saturday night, our faith-based committee is hosting the Hope Over Heroin Event. How many of you received a flyer or seen something about it so far? I'm glad to see that. We've been trying to blitz the area. Hopefully, we've done a good job. But the Miami County Fairgrounds, the county has donated the fairgrounds to us, and on Friday evening from 7:00 until 9:00, there will be a faith-based service. There will be loud music, free food, events for children, all designed to invite people who are looking for transformation and release from addiction to heroin to come and begin that step to be set free. There not only will be faith-based services, but there will also be a city of resources there. All of our public agencies, the Miami County Recovery Council, Recovery and Wellness, Tri-County Board, all of them will be there present, because it's not just about dealing with our faith, which is fundamental. Transformation comes from the inside out, but it's also about helping people change their behavioral patterns and the way they think. And so we intend to route anybody who comes and seeks help, not just to the scriptures and to their faith, but also to the city of resources so they can sign up for counseling and treatment and get on the road to recovery. So that'll be Friday night, and on Saturday, it starts at noon. The doors will open. The activities will afternoon. At 5:00, there will be a memorial march, which is held. I have to really compliment Mayor Beamish and the city manager, Patrick Titterington, and Chief Phillips, and Matt Simmons. They have all worked together to facilitate a memorial march from the fairgrounds down to the courthouse square and then back. It's to remember those who have passed and who have died, and we anticipate several hundred people will be marching. It won't be loud. It won't be boisterous. It'll be a solemn occasion, but it'll be a statement. And if you're free, and you need to walk 1.8 miles to improve your girlish figure, then join us. We'd be happy to have you for the memorial march at 5:00. After that, at 7:00, will be the evening service, and again, it will end around 9:00. And that will be an event, we anticipate, 5,000 to 10,000 people will attend over the two-day period. So I hope you will join us. The last thing I want to talk about is a major step. It's called the Quick Response Team. We have found, through some work at Corrine Township, that if you can get to an addict that has overdosed and been Narcaned within 72 hours and present to them the alternative of getting help, about 80 percent will agree to go into treatment and get help. And so what Corrine Township did is something that I've asked the city of Troy to consider. I met with Patrick Titterington, with Mayor Beamish and others to explore the concept of starting a pilot project, where we could take a Troy police officer, a Troy EMS, and a representative from Miami County Recovery Council, and if possible, a faith-based, trained peer specialist. And for one six-hour period a week, they would go out and try to meet with anyone who has overdosed with heroin, hopefully get to them within 72 hours. But spend six hours a week literally going to where they live, knocking on the door, basically saying, "You know, you almost died two days ago. Your life was saved, or you would have died." And to assess them, to determine whether they're ready to go into treatment or not, and then to offer that possibility to them right then and there. They've had amazing success in the last year in Corrine Township, just north of Cincinnati, using this approach. We call it the QRT, or the Quick Response Team approach. But they've not only seen a reduction in the number of people who are overdosing and who are going into treatment, they've seen a reduction in crime. Imagine if you can get some of these people routed into treatment, and you can get their lives changed. You'll not only affect, you know, the effects on the family and the neighborhood of the drug abuse, but you'll also affect the crime as well. So with that, I will turn it over to Patrick to talk about it further, whenever that's appropriate. I know a resolution has been prepared for your consideration, but thank you so much for tolerating my lengthy discourse. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, I think we'll start with that and just see if council has any questions first. Anyone? Mr. Phillips?
I don't really have a question, except from my personal experience as a 28-year veteran of police work and working in five years in a narcotic division. That is, some folks have come before our council here and indicated that, you know, the city of Troy is sweeping this problem under the carpet, and that is absolutely not true. There's a lot of grassroots work that is being done. It is not well-advertised, but it is absolutely being worked on, not only at an adult level, but in our schools and younger. Something that I can pass along with my personal experience is that every neighborhood in the United States, every block is affected in some fashion by drug, alcohol, gambling, or domestic violence issues. And if no one in this room and/or police and fire departments would ever disavow that and work diligently to overcome those issues. Personally, I will say I support your and applaud your presentation and your efforts on a volunteer basis, and probably will be there with my pastor Saturday also. Go attend your thing. But I support this, and I think it's well worthwhile to save lives, number one, and number two, to affect the victims of some of these crimes, whether it's theft or within a family or emotional abuse or whatever happens with these things. And it's very important. So thank you for coming.
Thank you. You know, I couldn't agree more that this is not about an issue of sweeping something out of the rug. When you have, you know, veterans of our police forces, 30 years or more, coming to you and saying, "Listen, I have never seen anything like this in my life, and we have got to do something. We cannot arrest our way out of this problem." Okay? Then when they're speaking that loud, then you say, "Wow." We need to change our game here and come up with a multi-pronged approach to address this, because they need our help.
I agree.
They need our help.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Anyone else on council with comments or questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Titterington, did you have something?
Just very briefly, you do have a resolution of support in your packet. We did not go to a committee meeting, because it is a resolution of support, knowing that Mr. Justice was going to present. We felt, and with the event occurring next weekend, time was of the essence, since we have been talking amongst ourselves, as well as with Mr. Justice, about the QRT and Troy stepping up to be, I believe, the first community in Miami County to form this team. Just to reiterate, we do plan on this being a 12-month pilot program. We will be generating some measures, performance measures, to see how successful this approach is. Since it is a unique approach, it is a much different approach than anything we've done before. We are committed to a minimum of six hours per week with a team of at least one firefighter and a police officer, as well as an MCRC professional. And we will gather the statistics and try to analyze them, at least on a quarterly basis, if not more often, just to see where we're at and how successful we are for several reasons. Number one, to gauge whether this is something that we ought to continue past the pilot program, because if it's not working, then we have to look at some other resolution or solution. Number two, we want to have some statistics to approach the state of Ohio, in particular, the Attorney General, who has made this a very big issue for obvious reasons. And then, as background to any other grant opportunities that could offset any of the costs that we might have. We're not sure what those costs are going to be. You know, there may be a mixture of overtime and on-duty. It really depends on which officers, which firefighters want to step up. You know, the most ideal situation would be the officer and the firefighter that was part of the original incident, can be the follow-up people. That may or may not work. They may or may not be on-duty. You know, there are several factors that we have to take into consideration. But, you know, Mayor, myself, the chiefs, we're all committed to trying this, and so we are obviously recommending that you pass the resolution of support.
And you would be sharing those quarterly follow-ups with council?
We can.
Could you do that?
Sure.
Yeah. Mr. Kerber, I have a question. Can we go out of agenda order here and go ahead and do this resolution of support at this time?
I would suggest you just have a vote to take it out of order, but yes, you can take it out of order upon the consent of the rest of the council.
Okay, and can that just be a?
Yes.
A motion?
I mean, does it have to be a formal motion, or can it just be?
It's probably best, just for precedent's sake, to have a formal motion on it.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to amend the agenda to move forward with the resolution of support at this time. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twiliger?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
The motion is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, will you then read the resolution of support for the Quick Response Team?
A resolution of support, Quick Response Team. Whereas in recent years, the city of Troy has experienced a significant increase in the number of drug overdoses related to opiate abuse, including heroin, and such increase has been documented by the number of Troy Fire Department responses to save the lives of those victims. And whereas, in an effort to halt this epidemic, the city of Troy and the Miami County Recovery Council, MCRC, wish to implement a pilot program called the Quick Response Team, QRT, the purpose of which will be for the team members to intervene with Troy residents who have overdosed on opiates within 72 hours of the overdose event to assess and determine whether the overdose victim is willing and ready to enter into treatment, counseling, to recover from the addiction. And whereas, a QRT will be comprised of a Troy police officer, a Troy firefighter, paramedic, an MCRC addiction treatment specialist, and if possible, a trained peer support specialist from the faith-based community in Miami County. And whereas, the responsibilities of the city of Troy to this pilot program will be to commit staff from the Troy Police Department and Troy Fire Department to the QRT, Troy minimum of six hours per week during a continuous initial pilot period of 12 months, to provide the intervention goal of the program, to coordinate with MCRC and funding requests to the state of Ohio to offset any operating cost of continuing the program, and to research and submit for grants related to the QRT program. And whereas, on at least a quarterly basis and after the 12-month pilot program, the QRT program will be evaluated to determine whether to continue the program for another 12 months. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council, the members of the council, the city of Troy recognize that drug overdoses related to opiate abuse exist in the city of Troy, and they further recognize the burden and hardship of such abuse on Troy's citizens and the Troy community, the loss of life, the disruption to families and neighborhoods, the physical and emotional addictions that result from such abuse, and the community resources that are expended in the current abuse treatment methods. Be it further resolved, that the council of the city of Troy, Ohio, hereby expresses support for the goals and objectives of the QRT, and recognize that the city of Troy, through its Director of Public Service and Safety, will be entering into a memorandum of understanding with the Miami County Recovery Council for the implementation of the described QRT pilot program. Be it further resolved, that a notation of this resolution of support will be placed in the record to the city of Troy, Ohio.
May we have a motion to support this?
Make a motion to adopt that resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twiliger?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
The resolution is approved.
Thank you. We are going to move forward, then, with the rest of our business of our meeting. You're all welcome to stay if you would like, but if you have other things you need to get to, while you're welcome to leave at this time.
Madam President.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Justice, before you leave, just you might, I was requesting, or I texted Mr. Titterington about the availability of this brochure on our city website, and it may need to be in some digital form that is available for that purpose. But my recommendation would have this thing available for every church, city, county, Facebook page, anyone that would want to share this personally or within a corporation or whatever, to have this available countywide.
We have distributed it in electronic format, and we are happy to send it to whoever we need to send it to here at the city to have it on the website. No problem.
Good. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the June 20th meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, June 20, 2016. A public hearing was held on Resolution R. 292016, the annual tax budget. Resolution Number R. 292016, adopting the budget of the city of Troy for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2017, and declaring an emergency, was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number O. 322016, declaring the intention to levy a tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation regarding a parks and recreation levy, was given third reading and was adopted. Following various comments, council adjourned at 7:30 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Question to adopt.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to accept the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twiliger?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Move on to committee reports. The Personnel Committee has the report this evening. Mr. Twiliger?
Thank you, Madam President. Our Personnel Committee, we met on June 27th to provide a recommendation to council this evening regarding establishing an additional full-time position of firefighter, paramedic, lieutenant. This would be an intermediate position between that of a firefighter and platoon commander. This new position would perform a number of duties that would serve, assist, and enhance the fire and EMS services of the Troy Fire Department. We note that the city auditor has advised that the current general fund forecast can support this additional position. As the position was not budgeted, a future reappropriation may be required. This committee supports establishing this new position. There would not be legislative action present to council until after the city and the IAFF bargaining units representatives meet to recommend a salary within the stipulations of the collective bargaining agreement. At that time, council would consider a salary ordinance amendment that would establish the position and the wage. It is the recommendation of the Personnel Committee. As no legislation is required at this time, it is the recommendation of this committee that council vote on It is the recommendation of this committee that council vote on accepting the committee's recommendation, that the position of firefighter, paramedic lieutenant, be established within the Fire Department at a salary yet to be determined.
Are there any questions from council on this before we take a vote?
Is there a vote on this?
Well, there will be, to support the committee report only.
I move that we, as council, support the committee report.
Okay. Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twist to support the committee report. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
The motion is approved. The committee report is accepted.
Mr. Twilliger, you may proceed with your next report.
Personnel Committee would also like to do an oral report, and this has to do with, I move that the council approve the appointment of William Wolke to the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund Loan Review Committee for a term ending December 31st of 2018.
Do we have a second?
A second then, ma'am.
It's been moved by Mr. Twilliger and seconded by Mr. Phillips to support the appointment of Mr. William Wolke. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you. We now open the meeting to citizen comments. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Kerber is our timekeeper. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to any agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address before addressing Okay, we'll move on then. We have no resolutions, and we have no ordinances this evening. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
No, there are not.
Okay. Mayor Beamish, do you have any comments this evening?
Yes, a number of items. First of all, as we heard tonight, I hope we will support, and I know you did with your recommendation of support and resolution for the July 8th and 9th event that'll take place in Miami County Fairgrounds. I would encourage participation in the memory walk, as you heard Mr. Justice mention, starting at 5:00. They'll start at the Miami County Fairgrounds. Now, the reason I bring that up, because I think that's very important, that we continue hope over heroin. But there's a number of other events that'll be taking place. Even on July 9th, we will have our Stranger Concert. That'll take place at Treasure Island. That's scheduled for 7:30. We're expecting a big crowd for that as well. Everything Fits is down at Proudly Plaza. That's Friday night at 7:30. And then, of course, the Civic Band has what I refer to as their new home at the Amphitheater. They will be at Treasure Island Sunday evening, and that concert will be at 7:00. The reason I bring this to your attention is, I think you're starting to see, this is a full season of concert events, activities that are taking place in our community. And those are events that are open to all ages, and all, most, if not all, are free. And I think that speaks well for our community and what we're trying to accomplish. Also, last meeting, I really screwed up on the beggars' night. The Miami County Council has picked that date, and I wanted everybody to know way in advance, because it is a Monday next year on October 31st from 6 to 8:00. So just, I kind of jumbled over that, so I want to make sure everybody's clear on that. Thank you for Bill Wolke's support to the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund. He'll replace Russ Thayer and fill out the unexpired term. And I really do appreciate, I think Bill will be an asset to that committee. Also, and I think Jess Nielsen's in the audience. Wait, Jess? Thank you. She was a designer, and we asked, and I see also John Wilson, the Chamber of Commerce, the City of Troy met, trying to look at a new look for our community in terms of wayfinding. We've talked about wayfinding signage so that we can point directions and target some of our treasures in Troy. And I'm going to pass these around. This is just a layout, thanks to Jess Nielsen and all her work, and I'll just pass that around and get an idea and a feel for how that'll look around town in the near future. I will hold this up, and this will just demonstrate, I feel like I'm at just one Wimbledon, but that won't happen. But this will go at the bike racks around town, so it will demonstrate where things are. And this one has a historic downtown with the banner, and if I flip it over, it has the Treasure Island Park. And that's just to demonstrate the wayfinding and the new look that you'll see, and I think you can see it matches, and thanks to Jess for putting it all together, along with the many partners that work hard to make this possible. So that's in the future that you'll see. I think that just about takes care of all my reports tonight. Thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Titterington, comments this evening?
Just a couple of additional comments related to the logo. We had asked Jess from Olivine Designs, who, she's here in Troy. She's done a lot of nice work for Troy Main Street, and so we wanted to keep her going. If you made it to the Treasure Island dedication and/or the concert, you'll see that we were in advance of this rollout, wanted to have the banners up for that. So it was kind of a little spoiler for you. Back when we talked 2016 budget, we talked about improving our wayfinding and freshening that up. What we mean by wayfinding is coming from the corporate boundaries, leading people to the downtown, through the downtown, to Treasure Island, along the Riverfront Corridor. So when you look at this logo set, the icons that Jess put together, they all share the common theme at the bottom, that being the Riverfront Corridor. And then, some of the icons in the middle of the circle are unique to whether you're in the downtown or you're at Treasure Island. We also have one that is part of the 11-by-17, one of the 11-by-17s that is going around that is our generic one, that adapts the county brand, the homegrown great, using the homegrown pride. And yes, we did get their permission. They were pleased as punch that we were using it. You'll notice that businesses and some of the foundations have adapted that as well to their own message. So what we will be doing in the week ahead, leading up to the next Treasure Island event, as well as the Memorial March, and just with all the activity going on in the next few weeks, we will be putting up banners in the downtown and on Adama Street. As the mayor mentioned, there will be logos put, these will be put on the bike racks. We are adding bike racks as part of the budget. Some of the donations that we received for Treasure Island will include additional bike racks. And then the kiosks downtown, as big as this looks, we have four kiosks, one on each quad, two-sided, so we will have eight of these, and they will be this size, and they will substitute for the Troy, Ohio, USA. We have worked it out with the Chamber of Commerce to, who is in the process of allowing us to change the colors, the red, white, and blue. We will not go away from the red, white, and blue. That is still our economic development brand, if you will, and will continue to be. But since the large green welcome signs, we have six to eight of them, I meant to count that before I came in here, but at the entrances to the city, at various points, they have one of these discs, and it says Troy, Ohio, USA. We will have a Troy, Ohio, USA with this color scheme and the homegrown great theme on it, to then start to lead us into and through the downtown. Again, it's to create a consistent brand, consistent wayfinding for our Riverfront Corridor. It will complement the region-wide branding and marketing efforts that Miami Conservancy District is leading for the entire Great Miami Corridor, from Sydney on South to Fairfield and Hamilton. And so this will be a nice complement to that, and will be applying for grants and to offset some of the costs of doing that in the next 12 to 18 months. That's all I have. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Director of Law, Mr. Kerber?
I have nothing this evening, Madam President. Thank you.
City Auditor?
Mr. Friggin?
Mayor Beamish and Mr. Titterington covered everything quite nicely.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments from council this evening?
Yes, Madam President. Just wanted to say congratulations to everybody. Last night, the fireworks looked great. My family and I went out there, and everything was pretty outstanding, so nice job to anyone that was involved in that, and the safety and the production side.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam President?
Yes, Mrs. Snead?
Just a couple of quick questions from our items of interest. On the Marina Building and the project update, it says that occupancy has been achieved. I just wondered if we had an estimated date of when the restaurant business would be opening within that building?
They are still looking at the end of the summer. It just depends on permitting and some demolition work that they have to do in getting equipment. So, you know, as far as that comment was concerned, we are to the point with the construction company, they are able to get in, they are able to start demolition. The only, it's not so much major, but the only item that they're working on and may have already finished, I didn't check today, is the railing and the gates around the balcony.
So work continues inside the building, but outside is pretty well complete?
I'd say the opposite. The inside of the building, as far as Brun's Construction is concerned...
Oh, okay.
...is complete, substantially complete. The outside is substantially complete, with the exception of the railing and the gates, which are in process.
And one other quick thing. You mentioned that there was a parking study survey that has been put out. Is that only for business owners downtown, or is that on the website for anyone to comment on that sort of?
Anyone can fill it out. It's targeted towards the business owners and other stakeholders, so anybody who wants to provide input. That's why we put the web address on the items of interest.
And is it available on the website as well?
I believe it is, yes.
That was all. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other council members' comments? Anyone from city staff have any comments? Anyone in the audience, any comments or questions? Thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. Have a safe and peace-filled week. Meeting adjourned.